And if he goes ahead and draws something up as a straw man for you to look at, it'd be easy to add anything else, you know, no drive-through, not near a park. It'd be easy to add that, but at least you have something then to scribble on and go from there.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to run that we open a public hearing. I suggest that we do it the second meeting in February. That's the first part of the motion. The second part of the motion would be that I also would move that we move forward with Larry, putting together a straw, what did you call it, a straw man?
Straw man.
Straw man. And let's bring that to the public forum and let's go from there. Is that a good enough motion? I think it is.
Well, we're gonna have a public thing to have at the community hall. I don't think we have to have a public...
Okay, that's, yeah, that's...
You could put the door in the door.
Hold on, we have a motion. Just second that before we talk.
I'll second.
Okay.
We can second it, there ain't no order.
That's right.
You have some other... I have a problem with putting two different issues together in one motion. I think that's...
All right, then I'll back that away. See, I'm just saying away.
Yeah.
I'll do this. Mr. Mayor, I move that we have public hearings on the second meeting in February for marijuana ordinance.
One more second.
Go, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a second motion.
Go ahead. You're red hot, go ahead.
The second motion is that we direct Larry to draft this straw man so we can take a look at it and we also make that information public for that meeting.
I'll second.
Well, that's a good idea.
And just for verification to the public and everybody, by straw man we mean that Mr. Lewis will draft an idea that everybody could be about.
That's correct.
A draft.
Basically a draft. I like that straw man.
Never called it straw man.
Did you video up and set up the plan?
That's true.
You can take it later, or...
Sorry, Larry.
Okay, go, please.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Very productive.
All right. We have the Lincoln County Emergency Preparedness Lasting Grant Program fiscal year 2014-15 to Technology Needs Assessment. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Sleep good.
Thanks. I won't wake up at three o'clock, thank you.
At the last council meeting, I just want to share some information that I obtained this afternoon. At the last council meeting, when you were discussing this opportunity for applying for funding through the Lincoln County Emergency Preparedness Grant Program, Council of Sparks brought up maybe they would fund a technology needs assessment, a study, if you will. And so that question was posed to the Board of Commissioners and this afternoon the response was no. This grant is geared for purchasing supplies or equipment, it would not be for a study or a needs assessment, just so you know, for your discussion.
Larry, you got a plan for us here?
Well, I looked into some stuff that we do need for the trailer and it's stuff that we could, you know, the cost is minimal this time. I met with Michael Dane, who's our radio emergency guy, and we talked about things that we need for the emergency communications trailer and we've got a lot of the radios and equipment installed. We do need to get into a computer to do some of the Skyping that's needed, that was part of the project last year, I believe, when we received a monitor. And he would actually use this in a wing link program. But we actually have a laptop that's available here at City Hall, so we didn't need to go down that road. He can actually provide the program. So then we get into first aid kits that are needed to, we had a storage area that was integrated into the emergency trailer, the first aid kits. We do have a lot of emergency food. We're still maybe looking at getting more and we'll have areas to store that with the new addition and possibly we'll stop at getting a Comex box and stuff. So really, right at this time, we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes, once the council wants to, you know, have them move forward on some of the stuff. But I believe next year about this time also we'll probably have an opportunity to get the same kind of grant and maybe by then we could put a lot better of an idea after we go through the budget and whatnot, so.
Remind me again what the maximum grant amount was?
Oh, the maximum that we can request is $2,500.
That's right.
So we can match.
So, okay, so do we have, I guess, you've got some ideas already, say, for next year that could need finding, that it would make the emergency trailer more complete?
Yeah, this will, it'll be here at City Hall by that time and I think by then we'll see what maybe comes up, that things that we need to have in the unit, that we're not sure of right now, but when we move it, I think we'll have a better idea of what we might need, maybe antennas and stuff.
Right, right, right. That's so good, that we can brainstorm going forward. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and at this time, it's gonna, we're kind of running on a deadline here, some staff time and writing up stuff that maybe we can just kind of lay it over for next year, if that's okay.
Such a small amount, it's okay with that.
I, yeah, it's okay with that. I guess one thing I was thinking, because there are three, if the infrastructure went down communication-wise, we have wireless, but also probably it sounds to me like we've got a little lack of satellite communication via either internet or telephone.
Right.
And so there's, for a modest cost, there's, either one of those options could be available to us. The easiest would be a satellite telephone at approximately, you know, Global Star offers a one for, it's a $500 for the equipment. For the mobile phone, you can get other things for it, then $53 a month service charge for unlimited time. Then there's at least three satellite internet companies. There's, let's see, there's, and that's a, kind of like, we have to point the dish from wherever we were, but with relatively modest service charges on those, that would come under the grant amount. And that could help make our life more complete if, in point of fact, the infrastructure went down that's on the ground.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it would give more options. We have, like you said, the radio, we have the backup generators and stuff, but it's always another tool for, so the satellite phone was definitely brought up a couple years ago as one of the needed items in emergency in the trailer. So, yeah, so if we want to move forward on that, we can absolutely...
Are you suggesting to apply for a grant to, through this program?
Is it a matching grant or can we...
It's a dollar-for-dollar match, so if we...
No, let's look forward to next year, that's fine, yeah. Get some pictures and information and see what's best.
Okay.
What was the deadline?
February twenty, February something, maybe it's the eighteenth, you know? Twenty-seventh. So we do have time. And you know, when grant opportunity announcements come out, we staff take a look at what do we need, what do we need, because we have a lot of needs and we get almost every grant opportunity. And as you just heard Brady, we, this year, for this, we really didn't have anything. We see next year that we'll be at the point where we will. But again, if you use a console, you know, like the satellite phone or something, if you want to submit an application, Jerome, you said it was $500 probably for the equipment, so we could ask for a $250 grant to fifty-fifty the cost.
Well, and then the service charge, so we can...
I don't know if it would cover that. I don't think it would cover the service. I'm not pretty sure. It would, they would help us to procure the equipment.
I see.
But I don't think they would help from the...
That's worth checking into though, we could, maybe have that part of the budget and then do the grant to get the fund itself, so.
And we'd probably want two of them.
Yeah.
There was more items, there was like an AED was mentioned also, where, you know, but that's something we might want at City Hall and in the emergency trailer, you know, stuff like that, and maybe in community hall, there's been that discussed with parks and whatnot. So, there's ideas.
So for this year, just to be clear, should we bring back information for this grant opportunity or just wait till next year?
How much are AEDs?
They were from like $1,000 at Costco to, you know, $3,000 for, you know, so, right in that.
Yeah, I haven't heard of any of them.
Oh, it's a, it's a...
Fibular?
Emergency.
What's that for?
And they, they're really nice to have. I mean, there probably should be one in our harbor area.
That is a big idea.
One here at City Hall.
Very good idea.
So there's no reason to wait?
Those public buildings have them anymore.
No reason to wait to deploy for it, huh?
Maybe you could...
Fibular for our trailer. Fibular, that's a very, very good idea.
Do you have to send a trade on it?
No, they're, actually, most of the, listen, I've seen are self-contained, it's automatic emergency.
It's automatic.
Yeah, so it is somebody that has their training, it all could use it and they have documented why it's been saved by having these things accessible.
Excellent idea.
So can we make a motion that Brady, that we have a staff find a price on, up to a dollar amount?
Well, would the...
To be determined by quality?
Up to $2,500.
Yes, there we go.
Maybe up to $2,500.
Would you like to make that motion?
Yes. And apply for the grant.
That's second.
You said have staff find a price on it?
AED.
We've talked about satellite phones.
So, no, we're talking about the fibular layer. The acro, I don't know what the acronym stands for.
Unneeded Emergency Disability.
Okay, all right, there we go. AED.
Up to...
The maximum? Let's say it's one line.
Okay.
Four.
Thank you for the clarification.
So we have to vote on that?
Yeah, we have a second.
Yeah, we have, Joe's second.
Go, please.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. So is staff authorized to submit that application or we have time before the next council meeting to bring back what we found and you've already, because right now you've authorized to find the prices, but do you want to authorize to go ahead and submit?
Get her done?
Get her done. Okay, thank you.
Want to item eight C, reclassification of Neighbors for Kids NFK funding?
That's me.
You want to sort that out?
Yeah, that's me. Currently, Neighbors for Kids funding comes through our unappropriated end fund balances in general fund, which is basically where we give 1% of the leftover funds, we have up to 1%, and we divide it up amongst a bunch of charities. And what I proposed is due to the significance of NFK for the city today, tomorrow, and in the future, that we actually take that out of that unappropriated end fund balance and move it up into a education and technology line inside the normal general operating budget. Now, I'm not suggesting we set a number there, because one, we can't do that because future councils or budget committees could say, well, maybe they are doing so well, maybe we don't give them money this year, or maybe there was a special project coming up one year where they needed more, or we decided they could use more, or however the process works. And so I was hoping that we could, by resolution, move that funding line up into the general fund.
Yes, you can. As your budget officer, I would have a couple of questions. Do you, I mean, you can, you can identify it as education, an expense line for education, and then it's open to anybody coming in and saying, you know, when you're budgeting, which we're going to be starting soon. It would not be tied specifically to a contract, if you will, with one entity, and it's not going to be a contract necessarily, but yeah, you can do that. And in essence, what you're saying is that NFK would not be included with other entities that have to submit their information to the budget committee every year. I mean, they would not, funding NFK would not be classified as a contribution. Is that, I mean, I'm just kind of talking words here.
You know, I, for me, I think they should submit what they've been submitting, because they're a corporation, they have a balance sheet, they have a P and L, and I think that's important. I'm just saying, we're going to take it out of the unappropriated funding at the end of the year.
Would there, I don't know, I'm not a finance man, to be sure, but would there be a problem with having one entity that's coming to us with requests, having it come out of one line and the rest of them requesting coming out of unappropriate funds?
I think Ross made a point about that in the snow. Are you asking my opinion or anybody that has more information than me?
Yeah, I believe the city council can resolve that funding for NFK will be separated from the group of the other agencies asking for funding. So that would be a council resolution, which would be the guide to the budget committee. But I was curious as to, then would the city decide how much, but you just said that, no, they would still fill out the information and submit their requests.
And submit the requests, but consider different than the undisclosed or unused funds, unappropriated end funds. It just becomes a matter of council and budget committees' decision on whether to fund it or not and what the amount should be.
What it really shows is the city's priorities and commitment to education separately from other things. That's what it really does, and it wouldn't change anything as far as the way we, Neighbors for Kids would request money. It just shows the city, shows education and technology or whatever.
And even though our attorney here says that there could be a question about that, an endorsement of that organization.
That's right.
I read that.
Yeah, it's kind of like an endorsement.
I see it as, yeah, well, quite honestly, it is an endorsement. It is saying that we value this organization that we helped to properly, we gave money to, and real estate too, to make this thing happen for all the children. For this town, it is turning out for some of the surrounding areas too.
We spent a lot of time tonight talking about it.
Yeah, we have.
It has a lot of emphasis.
You know, I guess what I'd like to see is a resolution, so I make a motion for a resolution to move them into a separate line. I see it as an education and technology line is where I see it.
I wonder if we should keep, well, yeah. Do you want to incorporate technology into my name as well?
Well, the reason I was saying an education and technology is, is that quite honestly, I see it, NFK being a 501(c)(3) in the city of Depot Bay and also something that's coming up on our agenda here a little bit, the Harbor Endowment Fund, which isn't going to be called that, Steeple Talk, but I can see us down the road partnering up in big projects. I really can. And science, education, technology, all hand and glove stuff. Yeah.
I agree. I would like to move that Neighbors for Kids be included in the general fund.
It's right there. Okay.
In the general fund and distributed for the committee's approval, council, adoption of the budget. But that's the first time I've ever done this.
I know, that's good.
It's beyond the spot.
Aren't we, aren't we, you go hard sometimes?
Yeah, that's right. We already indicated that a resolution would be much better for us than a council vote.
Yeah, a motion is great. Carries as much weight as a resolution, but seven and a half years from now, if you're trying to find a motion, it's a little bit easier to find a resolution. It's more tractable. It both carries equal weight as far as a council.
If you want to say in that motion that you would like to instruct the staff to work towards making that motion.
Well, we would like to have the staff work toward drafting it as a resolution.
And so, okay, it needs to be seconded and voted on, and then I'll ask the rest.
Okay, read the motion as they can.
Okay, this is what I have, and maybe Emma has something there. That NFK be included in the general fund and distributed for the committee's, I lost it there, and then direct staff to draft as a resolution.
But now, should we not have it saying NFK, it should be what you said, education and technology.
Oh, no, he's right, he's right.
We can't have a line item saying NFK.
No, you have to have a line item that says technology.
Technology and education.
Hurry, can you clean that?
I will, you're, this is very...
I apologize for my on-the-job training.
Dr. Lantone.
Somebody's got a second one.
As soon as you're ready, though, you may call.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
My question is, do you want that brought back to you at the next council meeting?
And then we would vote on it again?
It will, it will come to you in a draft resolution form and I'll, and you've given me enough information, I think, if I have any questions, I'll bring them to you for this meeting. You will have a draft resolution before you...
Thank you.
There you go.
Want to item D, Harbor Master Plan Study Advisory Committee? Who wants to talk about that?
I have to. There it is. And hopefully, you got a little late coming memo from me this afternoon, so you probably didn't see it until you got here tonight for the meeting. Anyway, gave a brief recap of the project, attached a copy-two of the application that we submitted to Lincoln County for the $15,000 grant that we were awarded, and I'll just review it very quickly. In January 2014, the city was awarded a Lincoln County Community and Economic Development Fund grant in the amount of $15,000 to fund in part a study to develop a Harbor Master Plan. I would note at the time that we applied for the grant, we called it the Harbor Renaissance. Now we're calling it the Harbor Master Plan, but the same thing. At the June 17th, 2014, Depot Bay Urban Renewal Agency meeting, the board recommended to the city council that they form an advisory committee to work on this. And they also recommended that that committee include at least representatives from the city council, urban renewal agency, Harvard Commission, city staff, and others they may deem important. So that was, there was an urban renewal meeting just like tonight, and then right after following a council meeting. So on that same night, the council did move to form that advisory committee, and they discussed the membership. And the membership, you know, was to include at least one person from the council, at least one from the urban renewal agency, the Harvard commissions and city staff, plus other community members. So the status of the advisory committee today is Mayor Mathelah, Dick Johnson, representing the urban renewal agency, Jerome Grant, now when Jerome volunteered for this, he was on the Harvard Commission. If you're still interested, I would assume as a councilor, you participate, as long as the rest of the council says that's fine. But that leaves us without anybody from the Harvard Commission. Burla Maggie Thomas was appointed to this committee in August, and earlier this evening, Mr. Dewick was appointed. So that's your membership right now, as it stands. Does the council want to?
Come on.
Well, yes, no matter. So do you want, what is, does the council want to try to get somebody from the Harvard Commission to volunteer?
We've had the positions open for much time.
We have.
And we waited, as I recall, this fall, for a physician to step up, and it hasn't happened either.
Yeah, yeah. So do you, do you want to put the last effort into the, get a Harvard Commissioner awarded, or are you ready for moving that? I just asked that question.
One second.
Well, we have some time constraints on this, on this too. We've got projects coming up, we've got, we have to meet, Jerome?
Yes.
You thinking, you want to keep on this with us?
I'll hang. I will, I'll comment is that if a, does this exclude any new appointees if one should come forward?
That's up to the council.
Well, right now, that would be five, so that would work.
Oh, you mean if I...
Well, you need to have five or seven. Yeah, you want four or so.
So right now, we have four or five?
Five, including...
Yeah, okay, all right. I got you.
So...
Right. Yeah, all right, yeah, I'll stick with it.
Maybe we can entice whoever's elected as the Harvard Commission chairperson to get involved too, but that's not going to be inside of that.
Well, that won't be, that'll be...
Well, that's going to be six, though.
Well, let's go with what we have.
So what do we got? What did you ask?
Oh, if you wanted to have a Harvard Commissioner, we can do the last effort, but, you know, the committee could start meeting. It would be nice for everybody to be on board from the get-go, but...
If we can find somebody from, excuse me, I interrupted.
It's okay. I think you're going to say...
If somebody should come forward from the Harvard Committee, I would be happy to step down and that... to step down, and, and that would keep the odd number of, of votes. But I will take the place until the.
Do you have a next meeting, a date to come up with?
Yeah, we have a set of dates for the meeting too.
Yes.
We have to spin all these people up, let them know that it's a lot.
So we'll touch base with the members and try to get you, just get together, just sit down and, and give us everything. I'm not sure if our engineers, if our doc engineers, you know, maybe they're going to be in town sometime soon. It'd be nice for the committee to meet with them. So we'll, we'll touch base. We'll get, we'll get this going. In February, we're going to have lots of meetings in February.
Hurry, excuse me, do you have my phone, Burke?
I do. I should have, I know.
Somebody does that, man.
Okay. Yes, we will get a hold of you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, you settled on that one? On the new business? The Harbor Development Fund.
I came in earlier today, and Hurry was kind enough to sit with me and help me frame a very short description of what we're talking about here as an initiative. And I should clarify that we're talking about the concept of a community foundation. Cities all over the country are creating community foundations as nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s, to generate new funding opportunities, new social capital from funders that cities aren't able to apply for grants. And the funding is new funding that allows the community to pursue opportunities that, to fund projects that they couldn't otherwise fund, basically. It just opens up the floodgates for billions of dollars of funding that are sitting out there among the 1% of the world's population that own half the wealth of the world. And in fact, those rich people put a lot of money away for us to get to, but we have to set ourselves and structure ourselves in such a way that we can get at that. So this is a idea that requires discussion with community stakeholders, and we're simply putting it on the table, and the city is offering to provide leadership, to gather selected committee members so that we can start the conversation and facilitate the process of forming the new 501(c)(3) community foundation. And that includes building an endowment for the long term, which was given, gives us another avenue for families to plan their estates around their, the city they love, and plan estates and wills and so forth, and leave money for us to open up at times the availability of grants throughout the year that community members like the Fleet of Flowers, or the Chamber, or Neighbors for Kids, or any other community organization can apply for a grant. So that kind of is the short of it, and it's just in the beginning stages of discussion here, and it's not, nothing new, and there's a template for it, but it's a wonderful opportunity.
Steve, how do you see us proceeding with that?
Well, Hurry and I talked about that, is that we need to think about who, and get some input from community members who might want to participate in the discussion. Doesn't have to be a lot of folks. Probably representatives from nonprofits in the community would be appropriate. Other members of the community who have a long history in Depot Bay, maybe five or six selected leaders in the community that could come together and we could start the discussion. I, since I'm a subject matter expert on this nonprofit business, I'd be happy to facilitate that process, that discussion. It, it won't happen overnight, but you have to start somewhere. We have to put the idea on the table. But it's been, if you look up, I would suggest anybody would look up, Google "community foundations," and you'll find out a lot about it.
Mr. President, I would like to, and Steve, I would like to see if, if such a group gets together and pursues this idea that we have a, like a cohesive, a codified mission statement, something that emphasizes what, you know, more or less why and, and what were they, that the community foundation would be doing, and who would help.
That would come out of the, that's one of the things that would come out of the initial conversations. The first thing we would do is have a vision, have a mission statement, and begin to, to develop the framework for such a foundation.
How do we select the members?
I don't know. The mayor could select them. We could get recommendations from the community on who those individuals might be. I don't know. We could go out with a bulletin and ask for, I, you know, I could help you, Hurry, to write up something like that that might describe it a little bit better, and, and have a bulletin, a request for people, folks to come forward, or you can put some names in a app. I'm not sure how to do that. There's certainly a discussion that needs to start.
The thought strikes me, Steve, that if you did that bulletin idea, and the people showed their interest, and then contact City Hall, and you get enough people, and then we could then schedule a meeting between the starters.
Yeah.
If you want to do that, go ahead.
I was thinking, he could really put a bulletin out, because there's over 260 homes in Little Wilco, and.
So, yeah.
Maybe he could put a bulletin out, because he wanted to help in the community.
Yeah. Well, see, Pete's here. He can't do that. You can't do that, because he's here. He'll know he got the job.
Well, no, I meant he could put a bulletin out of the community.
Well, it's, community foundations, I've been on a couple of them. I, I think it's really a risky territory to have tied to the city.
Not, well, wouldn't be tied to, it would be a separate entity.
The city might facilitate the first conversation, frankly, but community foundations really have to be pretty, really independent.
Right.
It's an environment that you, you know, and I think, Steve, I think it could have been just having a mission statement. I know there's a, Benton County has a big community foundation that lobbied throughout the state. And I think we could, if you could just grab one and use that as the initial flyer. And it's really tough to get it tied too closely to the city, because there's too many other agendas to slide in.
I would agree with, I, I didn't clarify that enough, and I absolutely agree, Pete is correct, that the only thing that the city would do, and Hurry, you mentioned how Neighbors for Kids got started long ago, it was simply, somebody has to start the conversation, and then those kind of organizations take off on their own and work as independent business enterprises, right? That's what we're talking about. I agree absolutely. We would back, we would find ourselves backing away once the group is put together and once they start doing their work. Let's do it. So would you like me to help you with a bulletin like that?
That would be appreciated.
Okay, I'll do that. We'll just pick a time. I'll start thinking about how to draft it up. But you're right, we could pick one of several models that exists.
Take, like, the Philomus.
Philomus?
And it's about the same, a little smaller, maybe common, but it's similar.
So they have a community foundation that does exactly that? Okay. I'll look at that and try to write something around that model. Thanks, Pete.
All right.
All right, great.
How do you spell Philomus?
Philo-math.
Philo-math.
That's what I thought it was the first time.
I'll just, I'll just Google. I'll just say, hey, you know, hey, Google? Okay, Google.
I'll do I O B, request for proposals, legal services. What? This is you. Oh. All right, but this is about, I'm proposing that we hire a legal service that is local. In other words, hire an attorney or a firm that's local by us, so we're not spending our time dealing with a firm that's a hundred and some miles away. And that was another reason that I invited our representative, Gomburg, and our council, council member, or Cherry.
Cherry Thompson?
Thompson, yeah, to, to come and swear us in, because we'd have been posted, if I'm not mistaken, $500 just to have an attorney come over from Eugene to do that service for us. We have a couple of other contracts. Wade is one in particular, but it's been dragging on now for how long, Hurry?
We started working on negotiations, but.
Almost a year ago.
Is this a year now?
And, and we have some other negotiations that are pending, and these things don't seem to be really going anywhere. I don't, I really don't know what our total expenditure was on that law firm last year, but I am pretty confident that by hiring a local attorney or firm, if you will, that it'll be who the city to, to take that on as far as our cost expenditures is concerned.
I'd like to keep on this, probably Robert too. Concerning our current law firm, it came on my radar screen in January of, two years ago. And it wasn't a big deal to start with, but it, to me, it was a trend. And that was, we had a contract that was with Coastcom, and in conversations with Principal Coastcom, I have to say, I was embarrassed to say that our law firm had taken a template from another city and applied it to their contract we proposed. That was, I mean, it's not a big thing in itself, but it was the start of some of the problematic advice I felt we were getting, and it continued. And this, this business with the contracts lingering for so long, I mean, I understand there's problems, but a year and a half is way too long. We need to tie these things up. I also felt that some of, although the thing about a lawyer is you can't always like their advice. I mean, if they're not a good attorney, if you always like their advice, it means they're hand-wringed to you. But some of the advice I, I felt we received from them was catastrophic here last year. Robert?
Robert?
Robert, who's been here the whole time too?
Yeah, I, I think the, my concern, my greatest concern is the amount of time with that, with the arrangements. What, I'd like to, you know, what was the, was the contract amount for, like, time used, or was there an amount there that we bought?
Well, it's a T now.
Okay. So, and is it, are, can we, is it allowed to be disclosed, whether, do we have a budget line item for law services? And how much is that? Do you remember ballpark what the, what the budget is?
Oh, the budget is?
Yeah.
We spent $20,000 or something.
Okay. So, to move the discussion forward, I think that it would be in the community's best interest to look at some requests, put out an RFP, and see if we can get better representation here for the community.
So is the, are the lawyers, do they bill us according to how many hours they work on our behalf?
Yeah.
If, that's the way it works, that it's.
That's what I gather.
Well, one thing I do know about lawyers is that it's all about the billable hours. And so, like you said, $500 just simply to come to Depot Bay to perform a, you know, a function, seems kind of inflated to me, but, you know, they have a set fee, and, you know, a phone call, that's a billable hour. It doesn't matter if it's an hour phone call or 15 minutes.
Oh, they put, they, they'll go to point one, or, you know, yeah, but.
Yeah, they might round it at, you know, or, or not, but it just seems to me that, you know, there's some unique things about living in Lincoln County, and especially about being in Depot Bay, that somebody from, you know, not to, not to disparage anybody, of course, with their professionalism, but there are unique things about living in a coastal community that I don't think are necessarily all that well-understood by a law firm that does business in, in, you know, in a large urban area that is not located in Lincoln County. And I think that we should be giving that money, first of all, and, and also the business, to somebody who is local to the area, who understands some of the unique things that we look at as a coastal community, and who has a better understanding. And it isn't going to be charging us infinitely large amounts of money for routine things that can be accomplished in relatively short amount of time.
Yeah, that was another problem too. We had, one of the firm's representatives traveled to Depot Bay a couple of times and to discuss the problems with Wade and, and the things they were working on. And what I kept hearing was, well, I'm waiting, we're waiting on, on the other party. And to drive through over here to tell me that, I didn't like that to him.
They could have taken care of that with a phone call, or a letter.
My comment on this is that change is healthy. If we've had a certain law firm for a long, long time, and there's a lot of new things happening in our town, and there's some need for personal attention that we're not getting right now, but there's nothing wrong with change. Change can be very healthy.
How long have we been with the president, Burke?
About two years. So, it sounds like you want to put out an RFP. What council needs to tell staff is where you'd like to advertise, when you would like the closing date. The last time we did an RFP for legal services, we advertised in the Newport and Lincoln City papers, the local papers. We advertised with the Lee Board in City. And I believe we probably posted, I'm sure we posted it, the RFP on our website. And we ran it for about two weeks. So from the, from the, from the first day of publication, putting the notice out, till the closing date to receive proposals was, I think it was like 16 days. So a lot of two-week period. And then after the proposals were received, then the city council conducted interviews, the full council did, with the proposals.
How many days was that ran?
It was, it was a little over two weeks. I think we ran, ran it from the, from the first day of publication of the notice to closing deadline to submit your proposal.
Yeah, well, we don't want a big gap in between. That's for sure.
Is there a, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, how many applicants did, were this? I was gonna say, how many applicants did, were this, uh, applications were received? Was that the last one?
I think we had three.
Okay.
Two for sure. Yeah, I think three.
Could we, uh, also throw to the Tillamook Herald?
Wherever, like say you need...
I, I, the reason I say this, Till, Tillamook's not that far. It's a very similar community to us being coastal. It's also the county seat, so there are going to be a number of attorneys in Tillamook that have coastal experience.
Like say, you tell us where you, where you want to advertise and, you know, how long? And if you have a, you know, typically we'll close these things a Thursday or Friday before a regular council meeting. Uh, so we have time to, especially if, if you all want to put in on the interview, we need to schedule that. It takes a little week's time.
I think we're extending it to Tillamook County would be a good idea because that's close enough that somebody could drag down...
That's right, there's a number of attorneys in Tillamook. And also they're not conflicted, possibly. I mean, what, you know, the one thing we need to acknowledge here is that this is kind of an incessant sort of community. I mean, we're all together, we all know each other. And, uh, for instance, in Newport, we've had attorneys there before. And, uh, maybe those attorneys will find that representing Depot Bay might be a conflict. So we need to be prepared for that. I think that's one reason to advertise an outside of the coastal area could go that direction.
Well, um...
I thought that was the...
But that's the reason we got to be very, very specific around it.
They would probably run all the names of the council members through their database to help see.
Say that to me again?
That, this is common practice with any law firm. If, if, say I, I go to...
On the Alcoa.
A local law firm here and, uh, I'll mention, you know, what this is about. I'll mention my name and, uh, they'll run it through their database to see if there's, they represent anybody that might conflict with my interests. And I imagine that, that, just to reaffirm what you said, that they probably, you know, a, a local law firm might run all the names of the city council members to see if there was any conflict of interest in representing us.
We don't want to, I would say we don't want to, I think Tillamook is a great idea from the reason you suggested, but I would limit it to the coastal bay. And that is because we simply, we want to avoid what we already have.
Is Florence too far out of the equation?
Huh?
Is Florence too far out of the equation?
Yeah, if you're gonna charge it to come over.
Well, so is Tillamook, it's still sixty miles either way.
And I, uh, I guess I would, uh, also want, uh, Sherwood, which is inland, but still it's a small community. They've got a great local newspaper there. There's, uh, I mean, I'm sure with, uh, Sheridan, Sheridan's, uh...
Oh, sure.
Yeah, sure.
If I might suggest, in the RFP, you could put something in there that says, um, that must, you must, your practice must be within...
The radius.
Thirty minutes of driving time or something like that to, to limit that travel time and that kind of schedule.
It's a certain amount of miles, time or mile.
See, it's, uh, seventy-five miles to Tillamook, so that's an hour and fifteen minutes. And it's, um, sixty plus, it's about si, seventy-two miles to Florence.
It's about that far? No, not that far.
It's generally Sheridan, but, uh, Sheridan's not that far.
No, it's...
It's much closer.
Two or a half.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's that? Two and a half hours, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not that far from here.
Okay. Um, alright. I wouldn't have, uh, put this on the agenda. I wasn't, uh, planning on being out of our county. And if we do this, I would like to have our attorney in our county.
I agree.
I don't want to go to another county. I don't want to go seventy miles. I want to stay within our county. And this county's long enough and is lit in distance, so I, uh...
I agree with you.
Well, that, uh, I would ask everyone to consider just limiting, uh, this, uh, RFP to our county.
I worry we're gonna get too many, we're gonna have problems. It's gonna limit the pool of attorneys that we can visit.
I, I would say, uh, if we're gonna limit it, uh, let's, uh, go along with the, uh, the radius or the travel time, say, you know, uh, like the seventy-five miles. Or, you know, that will again include the, along with, we're gonna decide, we can make our inquiries, you know?
Well, you'll pick up Salem.
Uh, we would pick up Salem then.
Right. Salem's not bad.
No, but I, I have to say that, uh...
But you're gonna pay mileage or you're gonna pay hour?
I, I will say that my experience, and I'll, I'll choose it from not the legal, but the accounting. When I first started my business, my attorney was in Corvallis. And, uh, he recommended to me a, a county firm in Corvallis. And, uh, within two months, we discovered that it just wasn't gonna work because they were in Corvallis. They didn't understand the coast.
That's right.
And it was, it's different. It really is different here, so...
Yeah, I mean, you need somebody where you can, you know, if you need to drop by the office, it's not going to be setting aside your whole day and clearing your agenda so that you can do that. It needs, I, I think, I mean, I like the idea of extending it, um, to Tillamook just simply because we get a wider base of applications. But, um, the consideration of travel time, the per diem, um, possibly having, you know, having more billable hours on there, I really think that, that, that probably means that we should limit it to Lincoln County. I mean, it's not like there is a shortage of attorneys in Lincoln County, so we should get...
Well, there's plenty of them.
Yeah, so we should be able to get some viable candidates that way. And if we don't feel that we're not in a big enough pool, then we maybe can go back and reconsider opening that up.
Re-advertise.
Yeah.
Well, see, the reason I like the Tillamook idea because, uh, the geographic area I'm thinking of is District Ten, which is...
That is District Ten.
Which would, uh, you know, Sheridan and, uh, Southern Tillamook. District Ten.
District Ten. What do you guys want to do? Well, definitely gonna put out an RFP.
And what's, uh, the, uh, can we...
I like, I like your, why don't we just want it to District Ten?
I like that. I like that idea very much. Which would go down, you know, south.
It goes as far as Yahots.
Yeah.
And then it goes across Sheridan and, um, it doesn't make it to Paloma.
Alright, all, all, okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I move that we, uh, ask staff to place an RFP for legal services for the city. And that those legal services or providers need to be within District Ten's boundaries.
Which would, the, the paper, the two of the papers that, uh, four papers come to mind. And then, so I'm sure there's one south would be the, uh, Sheridan's son, the Tillamook Herald, uh...
Lincoln News Guard and Newport News Times.
The News, yeah.
Alright, do I have a second? Most of eight and second. If there is no further discussion, there is some discussion. Okay. I'm sorry.
See, I mean, how many attorney firms are there in Sheridan?
Two?
I don't know.
There are not gonna be many. Not gonna be many. And how much would it cost us to advertise in Sheridan, hey?
Not much.
Really? Okay, alright, go for it. That's good.
Call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mapla?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Questions? Um, so I'm hearing different newspapers. Can you, can you, uh, just give me a list of where...
Sheridan's son.
Sheridan's son.
Tillamook Herald. News Guard and News Times.
Do you want me to contact Lee Morgan Cities? Um, they will have advertisements in their local focus magazine. If our timing is not good for getting that magazine, they'll post it on their website. Do you want to do that or do you just want to stay, um, with the newspapers?
Yeah, I would, you know, there's a... You're gonna post it on our website, correct? Yes.
There's a, there's a, why can't I speak? It's too late. Um, there is an associated cost with advertising on the LLC.
Twenty, twenty bucks? Oh, I think it's pretty low.
I guess if you put it in the LLC magazine, you say it must reside within District Ten boundaries. That's gonna cut most of them out.
So, so not LLC, just the four newspapers and website?
Yeah. And then the next question is, when do we inform our attorney?
Well, we'll probably watch the video. My next question is closing date. How long? Do you want to run this for two weeks? Um, do, do you want to advertise it for two weeks? And then from that last advertisement, give them two weeks to respond? Do you want to run it once in each newspaper? Give them, what, how do you, how much time do you want?
Give them two weeks and two weeks to respond. That's a month.
So publish them twice?
That's right. And so when would you be publishing the, or when would you draft the RFP to go to the newspapers? When's that gonna occur?
Um, and, you know, I'll have to check with the papers. It's like our local papers, you want it in the Wednesday paper, you have to give it to them.
Yeah.
You know, the Thursday.
I guess where I'm driving here is, is that I do not want our attorneys to find out through the papers, they don't have a job anymore. We need to inform them it's a, a professional...
Well, normally, you don't let go of your attorney until you have a new, because then you have a transition of files, et cetera. Unless the council wants to not do that this time.
I don't know, I just worried about the professional outlook of it all. I, I'd hate, you know, I, Jerome, just imagine you're in business and all of a sudden somebody put an RFP out and you just discover you're out of a job.
Well, I, uh, we...
I mean, shit happens, I know, excuse my language.
I, I, I think that, uh, both, uh, requirements are, it can all together. We would just inform our attorney that we're looking for new representation. And, uh, that basically we, we are going to keep him on, uh, or, or them, the firm on until, uh, we take a, you know, decision.
I, I, I think that's a fair way to go about it.
Yeah.
That, that's a pretty normal fact.
Yeah, it, it really is.
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want to be out of the turd.
No, but I'm just saying, I don't want them to find out.
Thank you very much for your service. Please drive through.
Alright, well...
Okay. Timeframe wise, um, you know, like I say, I'll, I'll touch base with the newspapers, see when their publication, you know, if you submit it now, we can publish that such and such day. Uh, we, putting out a notice like this, we try to get that first publication date, that day. So it'll be coordinating with the papers. Anyway.
Good.
Onto, uh, item C, ballot measure, revised city charter, sections twelve and thirty-two, clarifying the elected officials residency requirements. In other words, do they actually live here or don't they? Are they living in our city or are they not? And also I'd like to add to that, so it reflects us to what our charter has to say. And our charter has to say that, uh, in the spirit of the state constitution, the meaning of the state constitution. So is that right in our charter?
Um, you know, I recall back to last year. And one of our counselors at the time had brought, um, to us and gave us distributed copies to every one of the city council members at the time, a excerpt from the Newport, um, charter. And, uh, to frame it a little bit, everybody's charter, Newport, Depot Bay, Lincoln City, Paloma, wherever, come off a basic model. And that model, I believe, was probably published by the state or somebody had published it. And then, so, uh, some municipalities, uh, changed the charter or deleted issues or, um, items in the charter. And one difference between this city and Lincoln City and Newport are five orders. Must reside within the city limits. And that has taken care of the problem we faced here not so long ago. And our sister cities to the south and north haven't had to deal with the issue. And, uh, I, I, I would like to direct, ask the staff to find out exactly what the wording is in Newport's charter. And, uh, I know we had a copy of it somewhere.
It's in the records.
Yeah, it's in the record somewhere. I remember that piece of paper as clear as it was yesterday. And I, I have to say now, I, I found it interesting is the cost. Because I, I knew that if we were to have a special election, you know, say, put it out to the people, because we can't change the charter as a city council. That's beyond our scope. We, this is something that goes out to every citizen in the town of Depot Bay. It's a majority vote. It's not a, not a single majority, it's just a single majority vote. And so if we were to go out, we would have to have in the voter's pamphlet a statement for and against, you know, why do we want to do this? Why don't you want to do this? What the text amendment is itself. And then you let the people vote and just leave it to the people. One thing that surprised me is that to get it in, just in just May of this year, it's only two hundred bucks. But if we wait four more months, it goes to twenty-five hundred bucks. And then if you go back to November, it's down to a thousand bucks. But if we wait two years, it's free. I, I, I don't know how they come up with the pricing down there. I thought that was interesting. But for two hundred bucks, I say we hit the nail on the head. And that's, if we're going to do something about changing the charter and putting in text that limits or negates the possibility of somebody living outside of this village and that we never have to go through again what we just went through, which was ugly, divisive and not productive.
I think, uh, just, I guess in the, um, ballot measure of, um, we define residency as, as, as this council is going to put forward.
That's correct, Joe.
What we decide as a city council is residency. And I guess that's going to be, uh, uh, what, you know, what is, uh, common amongst other municipalities in the state and how they define residency.
Right.
Whether that's, you know, must reside within the city limits physically, uh, do we say how many days a year or, you know, or because some people travel?
That's an interesting question. You know, in our, um...
And because I know that, that I think other municipalities do have days of, you know, of residency requirements.
You know, Newport didn't though. Newport just simply has it, those five simple words. The interesting thing, we as a council, let's say, um, Jerome, let's say you decide to be a jet setter, which sounds really good if you're going to a warm location when it's cold there. But let's say you spend half your year there and half your year here. You're right. Is that residency? But the one thing we do have as a city council is we have the option to make exceptions. And that is in the charter, that we are the final determiner of a person's qualifications. Isn't that correct, Curry?
Uh, yeah, and, and I'd like to, uh, as, as much as possible, I'd like to take that subjective, uh, solution out. In other words, let's get, make it definitive in writing. And not subject it to one council or another, or another's whim or, or, uh, like or dislike of a, of a personality or a council.
Well, I wonder if we shouldn't have staff, I'm sorry, Curry, I know you're underworked and, I'm okay. I wonder if we shouldn't have our staff look at, uh, the charter of, say, Newport and Lincoln City, our sister cities, and perhaps...
Eugene?
Or Walport. Because Walport, Walport is more than, well, you know, they've got their own issues with that too.
Right.
For sure. But I'm wondering what Walport says, what, uh, the small, like Toledo. They all have charters. They're all here in the county with us.
Well, I'd like to, uh, the reason why I mentioned some of the bigger municipalities is because they've faced issues like this before, um, like that we have. And maybe the, some of the smaller ones haven't yet.
That's, that's, that's real fair observation.
Well, I, I'm no lawyer, and I don't pretend to be. And I don't really understand that much about law. But the thought strikes me that we could have the state attorney general make the decision on what the intent of the, of the constitution is. And we wouldn't have to go through all this.
Yeah, oh, how are you gonna get that done?
Petition, I guess. I don't, I really don't know that much about law. But it, uh, it seems to me that that decision was made... But it, uh, it seems to me that that decision was made at one time, and, uh, and our charter clearly says, "In the intent of the Oregon State Constitution." Says that in black and white. So shouldn't the, uh, the attorney general be able to clarify what that means?
I'm not an attorney, I don't know.
I don't either, huh?
I think the attorney general might be able to classify what constitutes residency in the state, but I don't know that that necessarily applies to individual municipalities.
Well, Joe, the thing is that it, uh, the spirit of the constitution of the state of Oregon, that's, those are the key words.
Right. Well, I, I think that there should be some, some definition as far as, um, you know, must reside within either city limits, or the water district, or however you want to.
Well, yeah, but, all I'm trying to do.
And maintain it as a primary residence.
Okay, but all, all I'm trying to do is save us from going to an election, but it's possible that we can get a determination from a, a higher authority. And if they tell us that, you know, we're gonna have to define it ourselves, that's what we'll have to do.
Mayor, can I, can I just pose a, a strong man? Example, so that you can knock it down, I just wanna find out where the council is going on, on this, and, and just simply this. Okay, uh, Jerome Grant maintains a residence in Depot Bay, okay? Whether it's in a, a place that I sleep, I recreate, and I, I maintain that year-round, have for the last ten years. And I'm out of town, and, uh, three hundred sixty-five days a year, what is that? That's a hundred and, uh, split it in half, a hundred and thirty, uh, I, I, a hundred and thirty-two days, I, I'm out of town, a hundred and thirty, uh, excuse me, a hundred, uh, a hundred and eighty-three years, days, I'm out of town, and a hundred and eighty-two days, I'm, uh, I'm in town. The, and can I be a city council member based upon that description?
How it gets into the needs?
Let's go with, in the, in our.
I, 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 within the, within, with, in those hundred and eighty-two days, I can be here for every day. I, I didn't say a second.
Okay, okay.
I, that's a.
Um, point where, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe when people speak more than two or three times while one person has their hand up and hasn't spoken yet on the subject, the other people are not, are not permitted to speak before that one person who has not spoken.
I would just like us all to, to how the council feels about my description of, of, uh, of a council member that resides here one day less than half the year, but maintains a residence here the full year.
I'd like to hear what Robert has to say.
Yeah, mine. They're not gonna follow the rules, then I'm not interested.
Were you in a lot of the, uh, well, please.
Okay, briefly, to me, the charter is ambiguous, it's not refined. And that's understandable, it was written a long time ago, and so is our constitution, it's ambiguous. But the point is, for me, the point is, if you read this to a T, what we did was incorrect to allow it to go by the wayside. This rule, we allowed it to go by the wayside, therefore, we really have, I wish I could shut off that camera, but. Really have allowed the precedence to be set. Therefore, I would recommend simply changing this and making it much more finite, simply for the purpose of showing that we, we are, we are concerned about this one-time event that really could have set precedent. So that, living in the south of France, no, that's, that's exaggerating. Somebody important could apply for city council in Depot Bay and probably legally force the issue. Because we don't say finitely that they have to live permanent residency year-round within the city of Depot Bay. Thank you for a very good voice. So.
My feeling on it is that there are, there are things that are dependent, I mean, I personally experienced this with the child support issue, where, you know, one day made a difference between, uh, you know, who had the, the child for the majority of the time, it was my youngest daughter. Uh, one day made that difference. So, when the example that Jerome pointed out, um, there's no, you know, there, if, as long as there's no requirement that says that you need to spend the majority of the year in residence as your primary residence in Depot Bay, that leaves the loophole that Robert just pointed out, in that somebody who simply owns a home here and says, "Well, I spent, you know, one day over half a year here in Depot Bay, so that entitles me to be a city council member, even though gone with the rest of the year, I wasn't even here." And so, and I also, I think, not trying to second guess or, you know, um, correct what's already gone by, but one of the things that I, I felt was, was not addressed in that incident that, that you were referring to was that there was no time limit set as well. I, I personally felt, because I was in the audience that evening.
In the audience.
Yeah, and I was here for that vote and, and witnessed that and, and felt that that was handled properly as far as it went, but there was, but I felt that there should have been an additional, there should have been a time limit. In that, it says in the charter that this, this is what's necessary for compliance. We understand that you are not in compliance at this point, and we are, we're, you know, by vote of the council, we're going to, you know, look, overlook that, or we're gonna let that go. However, I felt that there should have been a follow-up, that you have, you need to be within compliance within a designated time limit, and we will revisit that issue at that time to see if, if that, that compliance has been met. And that, you know, it didn't happen, but, you know, I, I wasn't here, then I may or may not have, who knows? I mean, we can't say what might have happened in the past. But I just think that there should have been a limit on that, so that the situation wasn't gonna continue to perpetuate.
You know, um, Jerome, I was thinking about your suggestion about Eugene, the bigger city.
Why?
You know, because, again, minimal lawyers, words in the charter matter, they do. Just a different word will bring a different meaning. I might say we just have Curry take a look in a couple other cities, to see, maybe you just write us a little synopsis. This city says this concerning residency, this, so we can take and digest that before our next deliberation. Because I don't know if we're gonna be able to solve this tonight.
No.
I don't think so.
I would say, I would say after listening to all this, that we need to do, be more deliberate about it, and take some more time.
Yeah. We have some more input, it's, it's far too complicated for me at this time of the night.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree. With Steve.
So, should we have the staff?
Yes.
Thank you a lot.
Excuse me, Robert.
All right, well, uh, we'll take, take.
Robert. Well, just to add, just to add to that, you know, we talked about, well, gosh, Zeke, you mentioned, well, gosh, if you do it by May, it's only two hundred bucks. Otherwise, it's two thousand. Yeah, you know, that actually, the money's.
This is so important.
It's so, when I said that, I was just surprised, is all.
Yeah.
I don't think it's something that we want to let go until, uh, two thousand sixteen, but I think it's something that needs more deliberation.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, let's, uh, table this with, uh, waiting for the report from staff.
Boy, they drove a couple big cities and a couple small cities.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, I, I think that, uh, there's, I, I, I think that when it comes down to that, uh, there's different, there's, I don't think we're one mind on this.
So is a motion in order, or?
No, we're just, we're just, uh.
All right, we'll just table it for now.
Okay.
Okay, good awards, Brady?
Okay, um, I've had an RFP out for, um, an excavation vacuum trailer. This is, uh, this is an item that we've had in the budget for a couple years. It, uh, last year, we, uh, we looked into the purchase of, of a vacuum trailer, and just didn't have a very good, um, price, prices at the time, and we kind of waited for another year, and I really have, and this is a really needed project, I did do a benefit analysis report on the second page, so I, I did my homework on this, and, uh, I know, uh, Councilor Olson is kind of really pushed me in this direction, which I kind of like, is that I, I gather more info for people asking questions and stuff, and stuff too. So, um, it's a, it's a very needed item, it's gonna really help for emergency situations, um, being as isolated as we are here on the coast at times. Um, for, for, uh, preventive maintenance, um, sewer degree and cleanup is, is really vital, and safety really comes into, into play here. Um, they, they were all using the same RFP with the same specs, it was advertised, if anyone's done correctly. It was, uh, shocking when it got some of these, um, but I really, um, uh, like the fact that own equipment can, can get us this unit for, for fifty thousand, and, um, it, it's a, uh, it's a brand-new unit, it has less than five hours on it.
A demo or something.
It was, it was a, something they had, they, they had used for the last six months as a demo unit. And they've been taking it around to other cities, and, uh, they sell quite a few of them, but they're gonna give us a, a break on, on this one, and, um, just a little bit over cost. It's about the same price, um, retail as the ditch witch unit. Um, and, uh, the Western Systems price, they're, they're out of California and Seattle area, you know? Theirs is just a really, really high price, that's a, that's a full retail for that. So, um, with the, uh, council's permission, I really would like to get this, again, it was, it was a budgeted item, um, it's in our budget, and, uh, it meets the price range, um, it's gonna be, uh, delivered for, for no more cost than what, you know, has a three-year warranty, and, uh, again, I think the crew could be trained on this, and, uh, it would save a lot of money. By, uh, for some of the examples I had in my report, um, just for vacuum, this last, uh, um. Yeah, fire, yeah, excavating for, uh, instead of having to use the backhoe, you literally cut a hole in the asphalt and you use the hypervaxis and high-pressure water and vacuum, and you could dig straight down into the ground, barring there's no giant rock there. But you could dig right through to a gas utility or something without having to excavate the whole street up. And, uh, I, I think it's a really, really great idea for Depot Bay, and some of the, some of it would be sure crossed with our neighboring district and the sewer line of it, but, uh, we did have it in the budget for example, a lot of different departments of the city, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we, uh, approve, I guess, up two fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
For the purchase of the excavation vacuum trailer for this thing.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I just wanna comment because usually I would want more information, in other words, to bring, uh, on, on really the amorti- amortization of what, what we've spent on this kind of service in, say, the last five years.
Right.
And, and, you know, because we're looking at a fifty thousand dollar bill, so that what would be the, you know, the timeline, uh, in, in payback, get based upon our, our usage of, of our own equipment and maintaining it, all right?
Yeah.
Fair enough?
It, it, it was, I did use some of that, I was, I was up to about five years, and that's in contracts that go out to, uh, um, that we would have to RFP out for cleaning and excavating the sewer lines, because it's a mandated, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's mandated by D E Q that we do cleaning and making some sewer rings. And, uh, just, just for the cost of, that's why I put that in there for, uh, for what TSR charged us, the five thousand four hundred dollars, fifteen to nine thousand feet. Also, there's the two thousand annually for the backwash pond, but, but we're, we're gonna continually maintain our sewer lines and stuff and not have to offer RFPs, and, uh.
So we'll also have to maintain the equipment if we spent seven thousand dollars last year in, in services that we outsource, which identifies the city from ma- maintaining the equipment. Even at that rate, we're talking seven year, seven years, which would, I'm, I'm gonna imagine that would, uh, the, the equipment would be, um, at least half-life, the one that we draw in seven years, so, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm willing to, uh, go along with this, this, that, that you, uh, based upon your judgment, Brady.
Thank you, I, I, I really have done my homework, it's a really well-needed item for, for saving our crew at, at this time, and it goes with the backhoe and stuff for, well, excuse me.
I'm kind of, uh, on the same page as Jerome. Uh, I usually require a lot more in terms of return on investment analysis, and lease options, and life cycle costs, and all the rest of it. So for me, it's, it's, I, 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 I'll go along with it this time, but in the future, I would like to see a more uh, complete return on investment analysis.
Okay.
With options like, what if we leased it? You know, what's that, I, I don't know what all the financial criteria is, so I'm not educated enough, but from my experience, I would expect to see more than what, but I go along with your judgment, okay?
Okay, yeah.
But you understand what I'm talking about?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, I'd like to see more information that shows that there's an excellent return on investment.
I, I really, I didn't have a whole lot of time, um, spent on this, but I did do quite a bit of homework on it, and, and just looking at the fact of, of getting, getting the unit itself for that price, and that's why it was held off.
Is this a refurbished unit?
No, it's absolutely brand-new.
It's absolutely brand-new, wow, that's pretty good.
They're actually giving us for just over cost, that's why it is such a good deal. And you really can, you can rent these, but normally what, what you do is you get the crew with it, I mean, the, the chance of.
Uh-huh, can, can we rent this out ourselves and, and help return the investment?
I don't know if we can with municipal items, um, we could definitely help other districts like.
Because it's a twenty-five, twenty-five-year payback at two thousand dollars a month annual savings.
Glen Eaton doesn't have one of these, do they?
No, they don't.
So maybe they would.
They would have to them.
Right.
Can we think of other ways to return the investment, couldn't we? Okay?
Yeah, and I, I also, right, and some of the other equipment now that we're, we're looking at for the near future, um, I would definitely take that in, you're, take notes on all that information and and probably do a little bit better job of, of my, uh, analysis.
You know, it just occurred to me, um, we have a wastewater meeting next Monday, and I'm not suggesting we do it here, but, um, you know, it seems to me that Glen Eaton would probably kick in on this, or they have a purpose.
I think they are already with the break there.
Is that, that they're gonna get, they're gonna pay fifty-eight percent?
Well, I don't think fifteen percent, because of the, but it's mainly.
Well, that's because they're doing this right now.
It's mainly gonna be used for sewer.
Right.
But, um, and, and, and a lot of it is on the big beam combined line, so they're bringing it on.
So actually, this money isn't all ours, who we're spending, it's some of Glen Eaton Beach's money too. And so if we could take it, so if we could take it, capitalize it, turn it back, and we rent it to them, that's making money on money.
They, they help us, and, and they have a giant jetter, which is a, a huge, um, power washing machine. We have one, it's about half the size they have, and it's gonna work coinciding with this. We'll, we'll be able to, to wash, vacuum, clean, and TV our own lines. Now, we have a really, really high-end TV camera that we can go through the, the lines that we've purchased. So this was kind of a long-term goal to get to, to get the camera, to get the jetter, and now the, and I know I'm talking in municipal terms, it's hard to understand, but we, this is the last. But we, this is the last link of, of really working and saving and abiding by what DEQ was, was mandating that, that we do without having to pay contractors to do it.
Well, I was just going to say, when you said they, they are paying for it, that's because they're paying their share of the sewer charges now. So in effect, this is, I mean, they are paying for it, right? Is that what you mean?
Yes, right.
I guess, I guess.
One dire emergency and that machine is worth its weight in gold.
Back here, back here.
Yeah, that's something I left out. That's true. It's, but I, I will prove and promise that this will be really.